Good evening. I apologize for us being a little bit late. We were in executive session. We will be returning. Tonight is Monday, September 11th. We're here. We have one quick business item and then we're going to have a board workshop on the presentation of our proposed capital project. We're going to start tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance. When we stand tonight for the Pledge of Allegiance, I would like us to do so in memory of September of 11th, 2001, for all those that perished, the first responders, their families, especially those in our school community. Please know that we will never forget. You will forever be in our thoughts and prayers. My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. We just have one quick business item. I will ask, it's a special meeting, but if there are any board members who want to say something, we don't normally report tonight, but I never want to. I like to talk. I don't ever want to stop anyone from talking. Okay. Okay, so the one item. And we're doing this tonight just because it's a timely thing with the civil service appointment, so it has to be done before next week, so we apologize in advance. Appoint a Senior Office Assistant. Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby appoints Diana Scotten to the position of Senior Office Assistant effective September 12th, 2017, with a probationary period of 26 weeks from September 12th, 2017 to March 12th, 2018. Ms. Scotten shall be assigned to the William E. Cottle School and placed on Step 11 prorated of Secretary's Salary Schedule. Is there a motion? Rob, second. Pete, discussion. All in favor? Okay, so we're going to not technically close our meeting because we will be going back to executive session, and we will start now with the presentation and discussion of our capital project. Carl, did you want to give us a little opening on that?
Good evening. It's great to see so many people joining us, and I do see a few of our Facilities Committee members. Brendan, thank you. I won't recap the entire process, but for over a year now, the district has been working hard to develop a capital project that we think is responsible to the taxpayers of this district, but also meets the needs of our growing enrollment and our aging infrastructure. So Rob and Dodge, two of our five board members, also served on that Facilities Committee with our architects, and we really worked throughout the year. What slowed down our progress in getting a public vote out there was this potential to buy 110 Ridge Street. We were hoping to expand the scope of the project, but when the community did not support that property acquisition, we took that as
and we think that you've come to a really sensible set of proposed improvements. So
a sign to scale back somewhat. So tonight, the board and our new board members worked
like a good managing partner, I'm going to let Walter do the rest of the presentation,
diligently all summer long with our three board members who returned, and they came
and then we'll talk a little bit about schedule and implementation at the end.
Thanks, Russ, and thanks for having us tonight. This should start to look pretty
to, I believe, what is the right plan for our district. It's a thoughtful plan. It's
familiar. We've been here quite a few times over the summer and worked really hard on
based on a lot of work and effort, and I thank everybody that's been involved. And
this plan. And as the superintendent said, we feel we've got a proposal now that encompasses
this evening, we are going to see a final version of a plan that we anticipate the board
all of your primary needs and within a budget that is attainable. So this is the building
will approve a week from tonight on Monday, September 18th, and then it will be placed out for a public vote on Tuesday, December 5th, 2017. Some of this work, the fields
plan and site plan for Cottle Elementary School. If you remember, our code is that anything that's gray is existing to remain without any major work. Blue means new construction
and the outdoor projects, will begin the summer of 2018, excuse me, if the public approves
and purple is renovation. So the big blue chunks that you see in the upper-left corner
this plan, and then the bulk of the construction would happen in the summer of 2019. And I
of the drawings, on the far upper-left corner is the second-floor classroom addition. So
will leave all the details up to our architects from KG&amp;D, and I'd like to invite them up
that represents seven new instructional spaces built on top of the existing building with
right now. Russ Davidson and Walter Hauser, welcome.
Thank you.
a new stairwell coming down. And then the other large blue chunk is the reconstruction of the gymnasium. So the proposal is to take down the existing gymnasium and build a new gym approximately the same size as the high school gym. This will provide the correct number of PE stations, as well as will accommodate high school-level athletic competition with proper spectator seating. So slightly smaller than the high school gym, but certainly could accommodate a varsity sport or a JV sport from the high school level. And then towards the main entry, we see a couple areas of purple, the largest being the cafeteria renovation. So that cafeteria renovation does include a small addition, and the library renovation includes a small addition as well. And then directly across the hall, we're going to convert an existing classroom into a steam classroom. And then at the main entry, we are proposing to renovate the main office. If any of you have been there recently, you know it's in need of some updating. And at the front of the building, we're proposing to build a security vestibule. So we have a main control point that can serve as the primary access during the day. And then at our secondary entrance across from the gymnasium, we're proposing to do some security upgrades as well. So we'll have better access over the building and control over who comes in and out. And then across the street, we're showing renovation of the softball field area. This would be a natural turf, finished on the field, but we would regrade it, reseat it, sod it, and restore it to great playing condition. One omission you see on this plan from the last time we were here is the rock lot. So we've now taken the rock lot out of the bond project. Understand that we may potentially do something down the road. So again, these are our computer renderings of the proposed work. So this image is from the softball field, looking back at the main entry. You can see the large man entry volume, has a fair amount of glass on the front. It is the story to have space. There are steps that go up into the building, so this would have a nice volume to it. And our main office would just be behind the white wall we see on the, or, I'm sorry, excuse me, our security office would be just beyond the white wall we see on the left of the main entry. And then a little bit farther down the road, we see our improvements to the exterior of the cafeteria and the library. Again, we're introducing a fair amount of glass. This is the proposed second-story addition on the classroom wing. So the brick on the bottom half of the image is existing to remain, so that's your existing building. And then up above, primarily what we see in white is the second-story addition. And the intent here is to keep this feeling low in profile and residential in quality. So it should match the surrounding houses and have residential feel. We're sensitive to keeping this a neighborhood building. This is a conceptual rendering of the gymnasium from the back of the building. Again, you can see we're using glass up high in our clear story application to make this gym feel light and airy from within. So lots of natural light, lots of natural daylighting, and again, we have a full high school-sized gymnasium, basketball court inside. This is an image from the interior of the library. So this shows our renovation to include new furniture, a new ceiling, new technology, and also the introduction of a whole new window system on the outside to bring in as much natural light as possible, make this a bright and airy, fresh, 21st-century learning environment. And our cafeteria. So again, there's a small addition on the cafeteria and what we're bumping out towards the street, which will provide us some additional seating, but will also allow us to convert what was the old gym with very little windows into something that feels totally different and is warm and inviting to all the students. So the primary work at the high school is the renovation of the library, the space we're in now, which you see in purple, as well as renovation of the cafeteria below. So again, we've created some conceptual renderings, and I will just remind you that this is very early stage. These are just ideas at this point. There's an awful lot of work that needs to go into these designs, both here and at Cottle. We'll be speaking with the administration, with faculty, and hopefully even students to get a better understanding of what this space actually needs to be, but these are really idea starters. What could be inside this space? So again, we see technology, new furniture, new lighting, lots of natural daylighting, and new collaborative workspaces to support your instructional program. So the costs. Our estimates have been updated since our last meeting. We have made some adjustments relative to renovation areas and the inclusion of air conditioning, and this was in response to what we heard at our last meeting. So you'll see now that the second-floor classroom addition always had air conditioning, but we're just calling that out now as part of this estimate. The cafeteria renovation at Cottle and the library renovation expansion at Cottle, both now include the air conditioning costs. So we'll be upgrading those spaces to have air conditioning. And you'll see that the rock lot is now removed. So we're proposing a total of $13.5 million of work at Cottle Elementary School. And at the high school, the library renovation scope remains unchanged. This space currently is air-conditioned, and we plan on using essentially the existing system. If we have to upgrade a piece of equipment or replace it, we can do that as part of this work. But the cafeteria renovation below now is inclusive of air conditioning, so that space will be fully air-conditioned when we're done. And we've included the air conditioning at the new wing, just the third floor of the high school as base project, for a total of about $5 million at the high school. And district-wide, we have included all of the priority 1 and 2 infrastructure and allocated about half a million dollars for spending on priority 3 and 4 infrastructure. This is a modest decrease from the last time we were here, but encompasses the vast majority of your infrastructure needs in this category. And then an allowance for exterior and interior door security, so that would include hardware replacements on the exterior and in the interior to lock down function classroom lock sets. So the work at Cottle Elementary School and the high school, including the district-wide infrastructure, now are a total of $20,531,500 as a grand total for the proposed bond. And I think we talked about this in some detail last time I was here. As the superintendent said, our understanding is the board will consider accepting this proposal and the associated secret resolution at the meeting next week on the 18th, with the concept that in early October, the board could move to establish a bond referendum for December 5th, which will allow us...
Sorry to interrupt.
Sure.
We're looking to do the bond referendum on Monday.
On the 18th as well.
Oh, great.
September 18th. So our attorneys are working with bond counsel, and we should be ready to go next week.
Excellent. That's great news. Great news. No, that's okay. And once the referendum is approved by the town, the public, we could begin our design work as soon as January, right after the referendum passes, and then submit to SED approximately six months later. There are, as the superintendent mentioned, a couple of components which could happen sooner, such as the turf replacement at the high school field. That's a less onerous design process, as well as permitting process through the state. Currently...
Boiler at the high school.
Yeah, the boiler at the high school. Currently, SED is about 32 weeks for approval process, which is significant, which could begin essentially in July of 2018 for the vast majority of the work, which would allow us to bid the primary construction in the late spring of 2019, with the construction start in the summer of 2019, and a completion in September of 2020. So it sounds like an awful long way away, but there's a tremendous amount of work that needs to happen as soon as a referendum is passed. And then unfortunately, a significant waiting period with the state for approval process. It's important to hit the summer window, so it's critical that we bid this work in the spring of 2019 with enough time to hit the ground running in the summer of 2019 when school lets out. So from our perspective, that's the target goal right now, is to, if the referendum passes in December, to meet that spring approval and award of contracts, so we can get under construction and get these buildings open in 2020. Did I get it all, Carl?
It's good summer.
Okay. Any questions? Want to go back to any slides?
Lee, did you have some, anything you wanted to follow up with?
Yeah, I had a few slides on the finances, if you'd like to take a look.
Okay, go right ahead.
Do you want to maybe, any questions about the conceptual design, or then we can go on to the financial piece of it?
Yeah, I think let her present it, and then we can talk about the whole thing together, if that's okay.
Is it still there?
Now, Lee's going to explain to us how we're going to pay for this.
Yeah, there it is.
Okay, so just to do a brief review of just some of the financials from the district. Our current budget is $32.5 million, and as you can see, the last four levy increases have been quite low and under the tax cap. This current year, we have a 0.8% tax levy increase. So we've been managing the district's finances very conservatively, and we're able to maintain that. In the community, we currently have 1,281 single-family homes. There are also businesses that pay taxes to the school district, but those are the number of single-family homes in the district, as well as multifamily homes. The total assessed value, excuse me, of all the Tuckahoe taxable property is $18.7 million, and the median typical assessed value is $8,500 for a typical home in the district. So if we take a look at that, also the tax district, the school district's tax rate this year is 1,446.6 per $1,000 of assessed value. So on the typical home of $8,500 assessed value, the tax bill would be about $12,300. Credit-wise, Tuckahoe is doing very well. We were recently upgraded by Moody's Investor Service, and we have an AA3 rating. And currently, interest rates are still near their historical lows, which makes it an ideal time to bond a project. In a school district, the way you pay for a capital improvement project is with a large capital, with a bond. You cannot use a project that size. You can typically not do that within your annual budget. The tax cap and other limitations that we have in a school district just makes that completely unavailable. But we can issue bonds to fund large capital projects, and we can borrow funds at advantageous interest rates. I've been working with our capital market advisors to understand what our interest rates might be if we went out into the bond market, and they've been giving us some information as to where we might stand with that. Also, going through this route with a public referendum to borrow funds allows us to maximize our New York State aid, which at last call to New York State was 23.8%. So New York State will reimburse the district over several years 23.8% of the project's cost. And again, if we do go out to bond the project, we are limited by the voter-approved amount that's in the bond referendum, so that the district is not allowed to overrun the cost. If we had to, we would have to go back to the community for another vote. So we are bound by the amount that we request, or we can obviously spend less. So for a $20,531,500 project cost, from our capital market advisors, the estimate of our annual debt cost would be about $1.6 million. We would get about $255,000 in building aid each year, over 15 years approximately. And then our net annual cost from bonding would be, after our building aid, would be $1,347,891, or a million, almost $1,350, is our net annual cost. So for a typical home that is assessed at $8,500, what I gave you there is the project cost factor. So if you multiply your assessed value by that project cost factor of .07196, that will translate into what this project will cost you as an individual homeowner in the district. So for our typical home of $8,500 in assessed value, the annual cost would be $612 a year. And then again, the next steps. Once the district decides on a project, we would go through those steps as the architects told us.
Lee, can I just ask one question, because this has been asked. If, how does, how do you draw on the money? So if we put it out, it's $20.5 million, and then how does it get drawn on?
You typically would go out with a bond anticipation note, which is a short-term borrowing to get started on the project. And then you would go out and do short-term borrowings in terms of how much you wanted to spend at the point in time when you needed the money. And when you get to a certain point in the project, then you would convert that to the full amount of the bond.
Okay. Thank you, Lee.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, with the, do any of the board members, any comments on the presentation about where we are tonight? Cynthia?
No, I mean, I guess also, I don't know if it was mentioned, but if the money's not spent, the full amount of the bond money?
We wouldn't borrow it. And if we had borrowed it, we would refund it to the taxpayers if we didn't need it.
Okay.
I think it might be helpful if either Carl or Lee could maybe speak a little bit about the plan for a classroom air conditioning that we talked about, because I know the last two workshops we had, we had a lot of discussion about air conditioning. We ultimately took a lot of it out of the bond project. We talked about, you know, efforts to get air conditioning, what's already been air-conditioned in the classrooms and what we're going to try and do in the future. If you wouldn't mind speaking to that, I think that could help a little bit.
Sure, Peter. I'm happy to. The Board of Education, over the summer months, was very thoughtful about looking at air conditioning the entire district. Of course, that would be a great thing to do, but our architects brought in experts in the field, and we got some estimates. And we all had a little bit of sticker shock. To do the entire district, particularly the old, original buildings, the cost was hovering around $7 or $8 million. So I think none of us expected that kind of number. But what we thought made sense was new construction or newly renovated space. If you're completely, you know, gutting and renovating a space, you did see the renderings of the library and the cafeterias. We thought while that work was in progress, it made sense to include air conditioning. Our plan for the older wing, because the board also started to talk about, well, what about equity? And, you know, although the library and then these new spaces, it's a wonderful thing to have air there, but the students are in the classroom, and the academics is very important to us. And if we could provide some comfort in early September and late June, we were very much interested in that. And Lee Lu, I have to compliment her. She has been working with our facilities department in installing window units. Now, they are far from, you know, ideal. There is some noise, but we have done upgrades. We had some window units in past years that were just not strong enough. We didn't have the proper BTUs. We didn't have a dedicated electrical line. So Lee and our facilities team has worked to upgrade the entire middle-high school building, and every room does have at least a window unit, which makes it at least bearable during the hot weather. And we have, I believe, about 10 or 12 rooms at Cottle that currently have window units. And our plan would be through our operating budget to continue and complete the other, maybe 25 or 30 classrooms in Cottle. So at least every room in the district would have either a window unit, or of course, the new renovation and the new construction would have central air. So that is the plan, and again, we would have liked to do more, but we just thought it wasn't economically feasible and responsible to spend an additional $6 or $7 million to complete the entire district.
That's a good point, Pete. Thanks for bringing that up. I will say, in just a general comment, we, as Carl had said, we have met as a board several times over the summer, quite a few times in August. I do want to thank the board really for taking this very seriously. I think we've worked very well together coming to this plan tonight. There was some, you know, give and take and a lot of new suggestions and things that we brought to our architects, so thank you again for your patience with us. And I really think we are all at the point where we stand behind something we believe that the community can get behind. There were some items, if you remember, there were some office renovations, the additional air conditioning units. Some of the infrastructure numbers have come down because with Lee's advice, we did feel that we could pick up some of that with our, through our operating budget. We fiscally have done very well over the last few years, but we don't want to overcommit because there is the 2% tax cap, and we never know, you know, what the future is going to bring. But with Lee's recommendations, we were confident to take some of those things off and be able to do that within our operating budget, and also bring the number to something that we believe the community can support. So we feel real good about it. We want to now open it up to the community, and any comments or questions anyone might have.
Hello. Alison Haller, PTA President. Someone from the PTA membership had asked me, they're watching at home, they had asked for me to ask, are all of the windows that you're putting in in the main areas, like the cafeteria, how it's almost floor-to-ceiling windows, if those are, how safe those are, if they're, you know, shadow-proof, bulletproof, you know, just the safety of them, and also is there a concern about that raising the amount of glass and windows, raising the cost of heating and cooling for those spaces?
Walter? So those are good questions. Thank you. So with regard to safety, the, all of the renovated spaces, like the cafeteria and library at Cottle, anything with a significant street exposure will be retrofitted with a trade name glazing called "school guard" glazing. And there's literature available about that online, but that offers some level of protection against intrusion and projectile. So yes, we are considering that, and it's definitely something to weigh and balance with regard to openness versus safety. But it will be a safe construction. There are implications on glazing with heating and cooling. The technology has changed dramatically over the past couple of decades with the performance of glazing. Historically, you know, you remember, windows in your old house may be really cold. I have single-glazed windows in my house, so as soon as you touch a piece of glass, it's freezing cold. But the, all of the window systems that we would specify and include in your projects would be high-performing insulated glazing systems with low-e coatings, so it would prevent extremely hot conditions in the summertime by slowing down the solar heat gain, and then in the wintertime, capture as much heat moving out as possible. So the, I will say that the glazing, new glazing technology is probably better than the old, the thermal technology of the walls, and maybe even a particular wall, and I'm thinking about the cafeteria over at Cottle. If we have an uninsulated masonry wall, the glass will probably be warmer than that wall. So those are great questions. I hope I answered it. Thanks.
Anybody else?
So with regard to safety, the, all of the renovated spaces, like the cafeteria and library at Cottle, anything with a significant street exposure will be retrofitted with a trade name glazing called school guard glazing. And there's literature available, available about that online, but that offers some level of protection against intrusion and projectile. So, yes, we are considering that, and it's definitely something to weigh and balance with regard to openness versus safety. But it will be a, a safe construction. There are implications on glazing with heating and cooling. The technology has changed dramatically over the past couple of decade, decades with the performance of glazing. Historically, you know, you remember, windows in your old house may be really cold. I have single glazed windows in my house, so as soon as you touch a piece of glass, it's freezing cold. But the, all of the window systems that we would specify and include in your projects would be high-performing insulated glazing systems with low E coatings, so it would prevent extremely hot conditions in the summertime by slowing down the solar heat gain, and then in the wintertime, capture as much heat moving out as possible. So, the, I will say that the glazing, new glazing technology is probably better than the old, the thermal technology of the walls, and maybe even a particular wall in, I'm thinking about the cafeteria where Cottle, if we have an uninsulated masonry wall, the glass will probably be warmer than that wall. So, those are great questions. I hope I answered it. Thanks.
Anybody else? Go. Oh, do you have two? No, do they have? Well, it just helps for people at home. Do you not want to?
We, you know, if you go to the microphone, we can pick up your, your voice more clearly.
We believe I know the answer to this, so I just want to make sure. So the new furniture for the new common spaces is included in the bond? Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And I just want, would love to make the recommendation that if the new classrooms at Cottle are getting new furniture, my, I guess my question is, are the old classrooms, are we going to eventually get new furniture for the old classrooms at Cottle and here in the middle school and high school? Because furniture is pretty dated, and it really doesn't match the new way of teaching that we're moving into.
I'll defer to Lee on this, because she does have a lot of...
We are looking into upgrading the furniture around the school district, and we've even started a pilot in one classroom to try some more modern furniture. We'd like to try to build that into our budget going over, over time, and start to go through the buildings and start to put new furniture in classrooms as we can afford it. But we definitely would agree that we would like to start seeing some of that utilized, more modern furniture.
Anybody else?
What's natural turf?
Grass.
Grass. Just in terms of safety, if you take a look at the budget, I believe there's over half a million dollars budgeted for safety measures, for a new safe, for new security entrance, a security entrance on the upper level of Cottle, which was Pete's suggestion. We did ask the same questions about the glass, and we're very concerned about that, and are confident with, with the advice that we have been given. So, please know that safety and precaution is our number-one priority as a board. So, we are very, very, very much, you know, relying on our architect's advice and are telling us that, that it is safe. I know that Pete had a lot of questions about the safety, and, and we are confident going forward that, that we're, we're in good shape there. Anybody?
Yeah, I would just add, in regards to safety, I think he, Walter could be pointing out new security for the Cottle main entrance. The, the idea there, and he didn't allow it, but, is to create a contained space. So once you get in that front door, there would be a security booth, where then you would get checked in before you would have, there would be another set of doors before you'd have access into this, into the actual school. So, that's part of that, that layout that he showed up there.
Somebody else just asked, the street, is it going to stay the way that it is now? Or, you know, like our longtime original plan was that there was all this curving, and we were going to do landscaping. Once the street becomes ours, as you said in the last meeting, we're very close to that happening, will it stay the normal two-way when the school is closed? Or will it always be closed? And will it, like, are we changing the width of that street? What are we, what are the plans for that?
Sure. As, as Alison stated, last meeting I announced that the town of Eastchester is working with us, and we are in the final stages of what I believe is a, is a transfer of ownership of Cybinoy Boulevard from Crawford all the way up to the first residential house across from the Cottle, you know, fourth and fifth grade entrance. So, with ownership, we really have the ability to do whatever we want. The idea now, the early thinking now, is to close the street during school hours and even after school hours. So our task students, I, I know, go back and forth quite, quite a bit. But then, in the early evening, open the street up and allow our residents to pass. And this is a similar system that has been in place for, for decades. But we do, we have, I believe it's five hundred thousand dollars allocated for the playfield. And, and we do have the ability to maybe move out, and I may defer to Russ or Walter on this, but we may be able to expand the field a little bit. The thing is, we, we want to maintain the street. There's also emergency access that is needed, in case of a fire or another emergency. You do need a wide enough street to have emergency vehicles. So the answer is, you know, I think we may make some upgrades on Cybinoy Boulevard, but I don't think it will be dramatically changed. Alison, I think you're referring to one of those original designs, and we had some great ideas, but no, that no longer is on the table.
And I think we also are going to explore some parking, maybe additional parking along Cybinoy or along Crawford, and, and that's all something that we still need to work on. So that's, you know, with, with the renovation of that field, as the architects have explained tonight, there is still a lot of planning and design work to still be done here. So, hopefully, those are things that as we move on with the, hopefully, we will, as we move on the project, be able to also present.
Two questions. The Cottle Field is notorious for it being bumpy, and I understand it's going to be natural turf, but how do we prevent that from happening in three or four years? Like, is there a sprinkler system? I mean, people have talked about, like, oh, do you put a sprinkler system, or do you...
Sure. So, it's almost a half million dollars, which is a complete restoration of the field. So it's going to be dug up, regraded, new subgrade, new drainage layers, new natural turf layers. So I don't know when the last time that was done, but given the state of the field, I'm guessing never. So, we think it'll be a very good grass field, so it will still require watering. I'm not sure we have enough for irrigation, but I want to go back to what the board president said. We have budgets and a scope of work, and then we're going to work together with administrators and the community to get you the most for your money and to get done what needs to get done. So these are all great questions, but, you know, will there be quite that much glass in the cafeteria when it's done? Maybe not. Will there be quite that much glass in the library? Maybe not. We've got a lot of work to do. What this represents in terms of the design effort is somewhere around one percent of the design. And so we've got that other ninety-nine percent, and we're going to work hard to get it right with the whole community.
I think also what Jana brings up is a maintenance issue, and that is also something that we are addressing currently, not to put more pressure on Lee Lu, but that is also something that we have to work into our operating budget and find a way to. I mean, we're going to, you know, build this, these beautiful fields and this beautiful facility, and we have to have a plan as to how we're going to take care of it.
Yeah. And we just redid the field a few years ago. I don't know what we did, but there was some improvement to the Cottle Field, but football players aren't even allowed down there because they roll their ankles. So, if we're going to put this money, we just got to figure out a way to maintain. It doesn't make any sense. The second question is, we were talking about, the entrance is beautiful at Cottle. I love it. But what are we doing here for security? Like, we walk into the school and our security person, we're in the school. Is there any measures taken for security here at the middle high school?
Walter, I mean, it was discussed...
Sure. So it's a slightly different strategy at the high school. One of the concerns at Cottle is, is the proximity of the first classroom as you walk in. So, literally, a visitor could be in a classroom before anybody even sees them. So the, the rearrangement there, as Rob said, is to, is to create, what's called in the industry a man trap, it's kind of a terrible name, but to create a...
Person trap.
Yeah.
He's a bitch with a trap.
Okay. So the, the idea is to slow somebody down entering the building, and they can meet with somebody to gain access to the facility. High school's a slightly different configuration, and part of the strategy there will be to utilize some new door hardware and get better controls on accessing and out of the, of the front entry. As you know, there's also a greeter at the front lobby of the high school, so somebody's there visually seeing anybody comes in and out of the building right away. So it's a slightly different configuration there.
There, if, I don't know if this is kind of stuck in at the bottom, but there's interior and exterior door security for about two hundred thousand, so that's to help address some of that security issue. I think, if I'm correct, it's also a historical building in that area. So we're limited as to what can be done in that area as well. So, I think the plan is to try and address it with the security doors and hardware and security system. Maybe it's a button open door or something. You know, I'll be fed up to the architects.
There's no buzzer, I mean, we could just walk right in. No, there's a buzzer.
No, there's a buzzer.
There's a buzzer.
And, and there's a camera system that we, we've done a lot of upgrades on, and we will continue. We don't have a view of, of every piece of our property, but we, we've expanded that quite a bit.
I believe, right, with our technology grant, there's some security cameras as part of that also. Okay.
You bring up a good, a good point, though. I think that your point also is that although the doors may be good and the cameras may be good, once the person's in the door, they're, they're in. It's a very good point, and it's something we'll discuss some more and we'll look at a little bit more. Maybe there's some way to, to create some sort of barrier where...
Interior. In the interior, if we can't do something on the outside, maybe perhaps inside.
It's not something we discussed thus far, but it's something we can discuss. I, I like the point. It's very good.
Anything else? Anyone else on the board? Any comments? We're good? Okay, so as of right now, our plan is that we will meet next week for a regular scheduled meeting of the board. We're hoping to adopt this plan, and anybody who has anything they'd like to contribute between now and next week, please do not hesitate to get in touch with us. There's just a couple tonight, a couple of ideas tonight that, that we can like to incorporate. But again, they can be done within the budgets that we've already presented, I believe. But any, any feedback, anything? I know that while we were meeting over the summer, it's a tough time for the school community because it's summer, let's be honest. But we were here working, and it's, for a lot of people, this is your first look at this. I will say personally, aesthetically, I think it looks great. I, I like the exterior. I like the way it will look in the neighborhood. I know that's very important to the residential neighborhood. They do have concerns about that, and I think, you know, the exterior, I think, is a really great look. So any other comments, anything anyone would like to add, please be in touch with us and let us know. We will meet again next week, but we would like to hear from you before that.
Okay. We also will post this on the school website, both our architect's presentation as well as Ms. Lu's presentation. So please, if, you know, you're talking to your neighbors, encourage them to take a look and offer feedback as well.
Okay, so I think we're good. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. Thank you.